All right, I have four thirty-three, and at this time we recall the meeting of Canyon City Commission to order. With that, and Mr. Ward, would you go to speak?
First, I thought I would just thank you for the city of Canyon, and I think you for the people, and you for the opportunity to serve, and I just thank you for the, just, the people of this area who are going to stay for a while, and I hope that you will just send us some rain, and just send a rain, amen.
That takes us to item number four, agreeable with the minutes, the meeting at eight o'clock. Final changes, I move the approach.
Second.
Motion second, to approve the minutes as written, all favor signified, or any striking motion. Close line sign, the motion passes. All right, takes us to item number six, proclamation, presentation of proclamation, and if you would, I will give proclamation at this time. Proclamation in the city of Canyon, whereas the citizens of Canyon recognize the crucial need for efforts by both individuals and groups to promote awareness of the plight of abused children, to work toward prevention of violence against children, and provide services and treatment for these small victims of their families, and whereas Emerald Area Court appointed special advocates, Bridge Children's Advocacy Center, and DFPS advocate for children of abuse and neglect, and whereas Randall County confirmed two hundred and thirty children suffered from some form of abuse or neglect in two thousand and twenty-two, and whereas our society has a responsibility to protect our children and help them thrive in a safe environment, as every child is entitled to be loved, cared for, feel secure, and be free from all types of abuse and neglect, and whereas effective child abuse prevention and intervention programs succeed because partnerships among a variety of entities, including but not limited to schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, child protective services, bridges, advocacy centers, and CASA court-appointed special advocates, family support services, prosecution agencies, medical professionals, mental health professionals, victim advocates, and other community-based nonprofit organizations. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and commissioners of the city of Canyon in Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April two thousand and twenty-three as Canyon Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, and in doing so, urge all citizens and institutions, both public and private, to support Bridges, Children's Advocacy Center, Emerald Area CASA, and DFPS, as well as other partner agencies in their efforts to increase awareness of and services for abuse and neglect to children in our community. All right, with that, do you have someone here to take?
I know, I'm with Emerald CASA, I want to point out that St. Francis, The Bridge, and DFPS are here with us today, and we can't thank you enough for just standing with us in combating child abuse.
Thank you for your order.
Can we take a picture with you?
Sure.
Do you want to come up? I'll do two rows, because there's quite a bit of blood, so if you're not, possibly if you'll come on this side.
Please, 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 do you? I'm not just making eyes at you, but I didn't know if you could tell.
Absolutely, I want to come on this side.
You're fine, you're fine, just stand, just stand.
Everybody look at me, one, two, three. Okay, thank you so much.
Actually, I think skipped over item number five, public comment, comments for innocent citizens, we do have a few folks who've signed in, but on specific gender items, so I think we're gonna sit with those items, anyone else who's signed in?
Yeah, you can say that, please, I'm prepared to each thing.
All right, then the next one, really proud of this next one, tremendous effort on our folks, and we're gonna hear a presentation from representatives of the Texas Police Chiefs Association Accreditation Program to the Canyon Police Department. Chief Ref.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council for Lenas visit with you for a minute today. So, Texas Police Chiefs Accreditation Program consists of one hundred and seventy-three standards, best practice standards for law enforcement agencies. Those, those standards are made so that we, we work better, we do better, and we protect our employees better, but we also serve the citizens better. This program was, one of the founding members of the first accreditation committees was Chief Bobby Griffin of the Canyon Police Department, so we want to recognize him for, for establishing the program at the Canyon Police Department. Canyon Police Department has been accredited since two thousand and eight, each accreditation period is four years, and that accreditation has been carried on throughout the, every four years, by Chief Del Davis and Captain Rader Simba, so we want to recognize those guys for, for keeping it alive and building such a strong founded program. We came up for, for, we were accredited in two thousand and nineteen, so we came up again this year, and under the administration of our program manager, Captain Matthew Collins, who I'm really proud of, he did a really good job, he got dumped on as soon as he made captain, and he really had to, to do a lot of work to get up to speed and take care of all that, and he, he had a lot of help from my partners at WT and at the Emerald Police Department, who, who wrote it from the set, but they did a really good job. So, after our re-accreditation period, we were the first agency in the state of Texas to receive our fifth accreditation. And so we have our, our partners from, who brings from the Texas Indian University, Captain Sanchez from Emerald Police Department, and Jack Hill to bring from Emerald Police Department, who, who, who can present the certificate.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me a minute of your time. I wanted to tell you that, number one, the leadership of the command of Canyon Police Department, as well as the support that comes from this commission, is key in maintaining these standards, you heard Chief Ref say, there's over a hundred and seventy standards as part of this accreditation program. Part of that means that every full year, somebody comes on-site from outside of our agencies to look at everything we do, and make sure that we're still following the best practices in the state of Texas. And as he said, Chief Griffin was a, was a huge factor in establishing this program, and to be the only one in the state that's had five reaccrediteds is a huge milestone. And I just want y'all to realize that it takes the support of, of this body to support those guys in making sure that that continues on, and it just means that you know that your police department is following the best practices in the state of Texas, and taking care of their community the best that they possibly can. The relationship that we have with Canyon PD is, is amazing, we work together as one big team, because of so much of what we do bleeds over, and so that wouldn't be possible without the leadership of those guys, and the command staff there, and the image of this body pushing forward. So, I, I know that my counterparts from Emerald Police Department have a few words as well, but I just want to commend you all on this achievement, it does take everybody. Congratulations.
Good evening, my name is Jack Hill to brand, I'm from the Emerald Police Department, I'm their program manager for the accreditation at the Emerald Police Department. It was a great pleasure to work with the command staff at the Canyon Police Department to help them get ready for their first site visit, and I hope you realize the accomplishments that they made, there are over twenty-four hundred agencies in the state of Texas, there are only a hundred and eighty at this time that are accredited. You are proudly have here in this room representatives from a department that has made that standard. It is considered the gold standard in law enforcement in the state of Texas, and they have achieved that, and what that includes is a great amount of training, a great amount of looking at the policies and procedures to see that they are reducing liability for your city and for the department, and they did all of these things and came together in a way that we get accredited for a fifth time. So, there's only one agency right now in the state of Texas that has done it for five times, and here at Canyon, that is it, and again, we are proud to work with them and help them to get that, and we hope that in exchange of information and ideas, that both departments learn from each other, and I think we did, so again, they ought to be commended, I think, for a very good effort, that means a lot, not only here locally, but...
And let us present now the certificate from the Texas Police Chiefs Association for the Canyon Police Department for the fifth time being a recognized accredited agency within the state of Texas.
So, you've all got the memo here, this is the, the third time that we're bringing this final draft of the subdivision regulations here to the commission, we've worked pretty diligently as a city staff alongside with members from our development community over the last three months, to get from where we started to this point, we've had a number of meetings, after the last commission meeting, there was an ad hoc committee created, the committee met in, in length and in detail on all of the remaining points of discussion that were left outstanding. We are very thankful to everybody who took the time, these three gentlemen right here have been kind of right with us every step of the way, from our public meetings to our hearings, to, to making sure that we're doing our due diligence to make sure we, we understand the implications of, of everything that we're putting into these regulations. So I do want to thank all of you for the time that you've put in, the diligence that you've put in to work with us on this. We feel like we've made every effort to work with everyone that's come forward with, with different points of discussion, to produce a document that will produce great subdivisions for the city of Canyon and its residents. As we mentioned at the last meeting, there's still some things we disagree on, as was expected, but we believe that the document as presented represents our efforts to make every reasonable consideration to really address every concern that was raised. There were thirty-two changes that were made, I want to call out, from the fifty-nine comments we received after the February meeting, so that's over fifty percent of the questions that we did look back and make a minor, all the way up to significant changes addressing the document in response to the comments that we received. There were also twenty-four responses that we explained more, we discussed, that were accepted as reasonable by the developers and their constituents, and then really it came down to about six disagreement things, that really, in, in my opinion, boiled down to two major disagreements, but we'll let anybody speak that has comments tonight. So, that's really what I have to present to you all, as I said, I think we've made every effort to go back and, and work harder to, to make sure it's a document that's suitable for the city of Canyon, and I think it sets us up for long-term of, of success as we go through this development process, I think it's going to be a lot cleaner, a lot more straightforward a process, and I look forward to implementing it.
Full clarity, what are those two disagreements?
The two disagreements that I am aware of would be underground power lines and concrete cul-de-sacs, so I did provide the city's justification for those two points, and just like a brief, one-page document that shows the reasons why we have those requirements in subdivision regulations. Any questions from the Commissioners?
Lucas, I appreciate all the hard work, and, and the elders too, I, you know, but I know you've been point guard and dug into this, and dug into this, and I appreciate what you've done for the city and for this community.
Thank you, appreciate it. Public hearing. Public hearing.
Okay, if there's not any other discussion, we'll open up a public hearing on this, and first, Dustin Davis.
If you would, if you'd say your name. Dustin Davis, thirty-five oh one, South Georgia, Emerald. As a member, and I'll echo what Lucas said, I appreciate y'all's time, I appreciate his time, Lucas and I have had, I don't know how many emails and phone calls over the last month or so working through this, and I've actually enjoyed working with him, it's been a pleasure. He did say there are a handful of items, you know, when we met last, I'll say this gently, I was volunteered to be on the committee, so I did so willingly, I, I enjoy the process a lot. Mayor, you're the one that kind of told us, can we get this down to four or five items that were in disagreement that we could present to the council for you guys to decide on? And that's really kind of where we're at, and I, I guess I'm the lucky one that will get to present those four or five items to you, I think it's really about three, Lucas said two, but I think there's about three of them, so I'm gonna hand out a couple of documents to you, and everybody can have one. These guys probably saw it scroll, the, the spreadsheet with all the comments, responses, response to comments, responses, responses to the comments, that's how Lucas and I have kind of been keeping track of everything, to make sure we don't miss anything, so I'll just go through these real quick for you, and you guys can kind of decide from there.
You know what, Grigian, I appreciate that, Dustin, since you've been kind of point guard, let's give you a, a few extra minutes, and, and we'll, we'll take that liberty, maybe Jeff probably leaves you guys three minutes here.
We did, one of the, one of the points that I had requested last time was to add the drainage report phase, and in the, this is in section two point oh three, there's kind of an outline, or a timeline on how things should go, I think that's still a little bit problematic, I don't really like it that much, but it's one of those things, I think we can make it work, I would like to see the drainage report be submitted, you know, right after the concept plan, I know it's not a hill I'm willing to die on, but I'll just point that out to you. The second part of that is, I still don't like the developer agreement being signed before construction plans are approved, now Lucas and I have talked about that quite a bit, and he has stated that the developer agreement is going to be pared down significantly, and that's probably going to resolve the issue, but the challenge I have is I have not seen that document to say, okay, yeah, this answers the question, or it doesn't answer the question, so, little bit of heartburn with that, but again, I don't know that it's enough to hold everything up. Next item I had, and one of them was, a couple of them that Lucas had said, a one that Lucas did not say, in section three point oh four, this is the preliminary plat, the requirement is if we make an amendment to our preliminary plat after it's been submitted and approved, and if it changes more than four lots, then we have to resubmit the preliminary plat and go through the process again. I would still like to see that set as a percentage of the total lots, if we're, obviously if we're not changing anything else, the lots have to meet the zoning ordinance, we can't be changing utility layouts, we can't be changing street layouts, but if we're just changing lot widths, it increases the total lot count by more than ten percent, what unreal does is a percentage, just ten percent. The reason I say that is, you know, a lot of my clients will submit a unit, it's a hundred lots, you know, four lots is almost nothing, and that's very... You know, four lots is almost nothing, and that's very common to change that amount, uh, because this changes with, uh, with the market. You know, from the time we start to the time we finish, we might want sixty-foot wide lots, and by the time we're ready to go, we want fifty-foot wide lots. Still meets the zoning ordinance, but it increased the total lot count by eight. Now we're resubmitting the preliminary plat to go through the process all again. So, just more time added to the process that I personally don't feel like is necessary. So, obviously there's stipulations tied to that, can't change anything else related to the subdivision. So that is one that I would request that the council consider. The installation of new electric has to be buried. So what I gave you in this document is the justification that the city staff provided to us, and you can read those, and it's the, the top portion, items one, two, three, and four. I would point you on item one, I would point you back to what is written as the purpose for this ordinance, which is section one point oh three. The purpose of the subdivision regulations provide for orderly, safe, and healthy development in the areas within the city and the city's ETJ. No word in that doesn't say anything about aesthetics. That's not the job of the subdivision ordinance. That might be a zoning ordinance issue, possibly, but it's not a job of the subdivision ordinance. Then you go down through items two, three, and four, which is going to be the second page that I gave you, is an email I received from XL, from Matt Gammon, he is the engineering charge of distribution for XL, which is really what we're talking about. And I just asked him, hey, can you give me comment on these items? And his response was, you know, the first, first item is safety, and his response was overhead lines can fall, but underground lines can be dug into, so there's a safety issue either side. Reliability, underground lines unlikely to be damaged on winter ice storm, but there's an issue with restoration time is a lot longer for repair, replacement and repair of underground lines. And then the long-term savings, and this is his comment, it depends on a lot of factors and very hard to prove either way, if there's long-term savings with buried power or not. So I feel like the city is kind of stepping into an area that's really not their job to step into. This is the, the power providers' area, not the city's. Do, do most developers do it underground? Yes, I'll let them keep doing that, but we're hamstringing any future developers or developments if they want to go overhead, do that. And I, I don't see a reason to do that for the city to do that. If XL wants to live with that, let XL live with that. And then the, I think the last item. Uh, cul-de-sacs. So the new, the newest rule for, basically for streets is paving the cul-de-sac end, the closed end of a street with concrete pavement. Couple of things on that, obviously that's a, that's a huge cost burden, it's going to get passed on, the developers are going to have to incur that burden, it's going to get passed on to the end user, uh, which at the end of the day makes lot costs go up, which makes the sales price go up, it makes whole prices go up. Everything gets passed on, um, and this is an area where, if we're, say we're going to be pro-development, let's be pro-development, let's not make it harder. Uh, the second side of that, if you look at the connectivity index requirements that are in this subdivision ordinance, it severely limits the ability to even have cul-de-sacs. So why do we need to make it even harder? If we don't want cul-de-sacs as a whole, is what this ordinance is stating, the few that we have, are we going to save that much money on maintenance by putting it in concrete? So, that's the last item that I have, that I would ask for you guys to consider as a council. Concrete cul-de-sacs, buried power, um, the changing of the preliminary plat are the main three. The others, I, I don't know that there's anything to consider there, I just, I wanted to point those issues out to you guys. And I'll answer any questions you guys have.
I just have a point of clarification, it's not necessarily to the, what you talked about, what's, what's Matthew, uh, Gammon's title?
With XL.
He is with XL, he is in charge of all of the distribution engineers, I can get that for you. That's okay. I don't know off the top of my head.
All right, thanks, Dustin. Jeff, looks like you're, uh...
Kevin Hamilton, um, seventeen three oh one. Good? Yeah, I'm under three, I'll be under three, but I, I just felt like I needed to come back and tell you guys, thank you, thank you for the ability to, to meet, to go through the items that we had, that we disagreed about. Um, you know, we, we were asked to, to give our opinion in the meetings with Dustin and Lucas, and, and I appreciate that, I really do. I think that had that happened in the process up to the, the first time we tried to vote on this, it would have been completely different. Um, I do agree, and that's the reason we asked Duskin to speak for us, um, and, and kind of head this whole process, uh, but I do agree with some of the points that he meant, that he made, um, with the concrete cul-de-sacs and the, the, the power lines, stuff like that, I completely agree with him. I don't want to pass that cost on, um, but as a whole, I think the document is way better, um, and I appreciate what you guys, it allows us to do. Appreciate your hard work, Lucas, really do, um, that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thirty seconds.
We can do it. Danny Hamilton, ten five five four FM twenty-three nineteen. Appreciate the fact that, uh, the process got done the way, um, it did. Um, I wish that we wouldn't have had to come up here and kind of cause a little fuss about it, but ultimately I think the bill's better, the regulations are better, and thirty-two out of fifty-nine is what I want to say, to reiterate to the council. So sometimes, sometimes things need to step back, just like you guys did, send it back to committee, send it back to the process, and thirty-two out of fifty-nine changes, minor, major, whatever, but I think ultimately we have a better product. Thanks.
It's good. It's good. I think it's twenty-four seconds.
What's that?
He did twenty-four seconds.
Ooh.
All right, uh, you know what, with that, um, Joe or Lucas, do you all want to add any more before, uh, or any other discussion or questions, but, uh...
I can, I have just a response to the first one that you talked about.
Okay.
Uh, that I didn't mention, uh, which is the preliminary plat requirement, why we're requiring a resubmital if it's a change in four or more lots. Uh, we derive that from, uh, state authority for municipality to grant an administrative plat. So it's not the same thing, but it's where we derive that requirement, uh, and basically our, um, feeling is that if a plat can be administratively approved for a change of less than four lots, then we feel comfortable making that determination in-house. Uh, we think that if it changes more significantly than that, then that would determine, uh, basically by definition, that would be a major change, and so we felt comfortable setting that as the metric, uh, for kicking the plat back, uh, for resubmital, rather than just going ahead and approving the final plat. So that's where we derived that, that four, um, unit kind of requirement. Um, and I'll just say to the point of, you know, Amarillo has a ten percent metric that they use, I think, you know, one of the benefits of being smaller is we can pay a little more close attention than a larger entity might to development, and I think here in Canyon, that's something that we can use to our advantage of saying, you know, typically maybe four lots and a hundred units wouldn't make a big difference, um, but maybe there'd be something we wouldn't have noticed otherwise, so, um, I'm, I'm comfortable with that number, and I think it makes a lot of sense, and, and we have an advantage of, uh, you know, with our small size, being able to pay a little more close attention to things like that, so. That's my, that's my two cents, and then you already have my justification for the other two points, uh, written up.
Eric, can I respond to that? I gave you all another, I forgot to mention, can I respond to that or no?
Yeah, and I probably should have already closed the public hearing, so, um...
Dustin's referring to the two twelve, point oh six, five, section of the...
You know what, I'll close the public hearing, but yeah, Dustin, if you just make a quick comment there.
Yeah, and I, so their justification for the four lots was that, uh, local government code two twelve that I gave you guys, and my concern with that is, that section has nothing to do with what we're talking about. This two twelve double oh six five is, allows you guys to grant the authority to a staff member to approve minor changes to a plat. We're talking about a change to a preliminary plat going back through the process, so in my mind, it's two very different things. I, I don't think that, in my opinion, their justification is for something that other than what the regulation is for. Thank you.
A few, a few other comments. Um, we do suspect the development agreement will be hemmed significantly with all these changes being in effect. In, in turn, this, a lot of the things we're enforcing now, which are in our current subdivision relations, are in that development agreement, we feel that that'll drop off, that new form has not been created yet, obviously pending these, uh, page seven of the, of the sub-standards goes over that, securities, fee, things of that nature, so a lot of that will be trimmed down. We'll even take out, uh, the concept plan, we've had a lot of internal discussions about not having the concept plan in the development agreement, because that could potentially trigger, if there's a concept plan change, it needs to be changed in that agreement, well, that just creates too much bureaucracy. So Lucas and I have talked about that to the ends of the earth on doing that, and we can finalize that process a little easier. On, on, on Mr. Davis's, uh, comment on the drainage report, I think we'd like to see how it goes, um, and that, and we would be up for discussing that after this gets into effect and goes, to see if that step of where it's at is functional or not. As Lucas and I have said multiple times, if something's broken, we're going to come back and fix it, so, we're going to try to especially, and I think that's probably one we'll pay attention to, that's one we talk about constantly, I don't think the word drainage report is leaving anytime soon, and so I think we'd be willing to, to watch that to see how effective that is in our process of steps.
Joe, a big one that the city did reverse and go the other direction too, was on the traffic study today.
Correct, we haven't, we haven't mentioned that, um, I know you and Commissioner Jones were both at our conversation with TechDoc, um, and we visited briefly with Randall County, they really didn't weigh in a ton. Um, but TechDoc was really the ones that kind of dissuaded us to change some of that verbiage to engineering studies, uh, and as a may instead, instead of having the full-blown TIA, it's traffic impact analysis, uh, to the nth degree, it's kind of safe. You know, more or less, we could aim at a certain thing, instead of going for the shotgun effect, is kind of the best way to explain it, because you get all the information, even if you don't want it or not, uh, and so I think we all came away with that, but obviously TechDoc is in the business of traffic, transportation, we wanted to hear from them, we felt good about, about that and lighting it up, so, and I think these, these, uh, development community feel good about where we're at on something. And they heard some of our concerns, you know, especially, you know, a lot of our developments occurring on twenty-five ninety, it is seeing some massive significant impact, um, myself and, and Mr. Reese are on the MPO together, and we have watched, you know, the project on the, on twenty-five ninety rise for the last two years faster than any project goes. There's going to be, there's going to be intersection improvements in twenty-twenty-four, hopefully, and so that's significant in and of itself, I've never seen a project at the MPO level move that fast, um, there's just a lot happening, I mean, we're building hundreds, if not a thousand-plus homes on twenty-five ninety, just in the canyon side of things. That doesn't, and, you know, there's more outside of that that are affected by, by that major thoroughfare, um, so I know we have some concerns as we don't, as we move into the future on the traffic flow patterns, uh, because it's increasing, those, if you don't think twenty-five ninety's increasing, you must be living on a rock, because it is all affected and it all turns to one, and so we're just being very mindful of that fact. It will get worse before it gets better, even with those systematic improvements on intersections. I felt we landed on, on, on good ground for now. Sorry, that was a long answer. It all works together.
Will, have any other discussion or questions, or...
Yeah, what's the, what's the plan and how often will this plan be reviewed and potentially changed again?
Yeah, I think the plan is to go from this step, as Joe said, we have a, a development guide that will follow this, and we, we don't have that updated and ready, because we wanted to make sure that all the language in this document was finalized before we work on finishing all the applications and everything that are in that.
We do have a preliminary draft.
Yeah, we have a, we have a full draft done of the development guide, but we'll go back and tweak it and make sure it's, it's accurate, given the final document, and then, um, we'll implement and, and work with it, and as Joe said, as changes need to occur, as things, um, as things progress, we'll make changes that we need to. I think in general, all regulatory documents should have a, a five to ten-year review period, that's, that's similar with the comprehensive plan. After you've adopted a comp plan for five years, you want to look back and see where you're at, see if you need to speed up, or if you're almost done, and then around ten to fifteen years, you have to rewrite the whole thing, so, um, I think we're going to look at these in a similar fashion.
I will add to his, one thing that this does, the other one doesn't, it, the other one, the existing one, just had standards. It didn't really have a lot of process, and the process was what was really being elaborated by, by the development, uh, community, and we, we were also elaborating internally that we, I mean, Lucas hears me at least once a week, consistency, consistency, consistency. And so that has really been a big change that was not there, that, I mean, it did add a lot more structure and depth into how many codes there are, but it is a structured process, step one to end where it's not just regulation. It's not, you know, the street has to be this wide, it's more than just that.
And I think we'll see, as waivers come forward, Joe, that, that's another sign to us, if people continue to ask for a waiver or a change in something, and that, that's a sign to us that, do we need to look at that, is that, is that something that's not appropriate? So that's something that would cause us to look at it.
Just to reiterate, there is a waiver process now, you know, we've only done really one, I mean, most of the waivers have been going in the form of the development agreements into this body. The waiver process is not easy, it starts with planning and zoning, it starts with the development team, uh, both minor and, and major, and it goes to the planning and zoning commission, and then it goes to, to city commission for final review. Those have to be negotiated before development agreement can be approved.
Only the major ones come to us though, right?
Yes, they can appeal minor, there is an appeal, there is an appealing process to do that. Development review team makes those calls on the minor, and there's appeals, and I think it goes to commission, isn't that correct, Lucas?
Yep.
So if, if they don't like our answer, they have, they have an appropriate channel to appeal that, to the elected body. Do you have any other thoughts or comments?
Are the concerns that they have, Al, is that they're considered major?
Minor list, list very few.
I'll make a motion, we adopt the updated C of Canyon subdivision regulations as presented.
Second. Have a motion, second, to adopt the updated C commission, excuse me, the C of Canyon subdivision regulations as presented, is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, second, by erasing your right here. Opposed, like sign. Uh, the motion passes. Uh, and thank you all for your part in it, and, uh, yeah, special thanks to you, Lucas, and just, of course, uh, time and effort, and, and I know Joe, uh, the rest of the crew too, so, appreciate it.
Zoning's next.
All right, um, that will take us to item number nine, uh, first reading, resolution number eighteen dash twenty-two-three, a resolution of the C commission of the City of Canyon approving a project funding agreement between City of Canyon and Canyon Economic Development Corporation related to direct financial assistance or additional funding for Kylie Heiner Memorial Playground project.
Mayor, we're super excited, we're actually going to get to come to you with four items today. Um, this is the reason why everybody lives in Canyon, we have four great items today. Um, uh, we actually, um, I guess on March the ninth, um, we had a meeting with the CDC, uh, with the opposed, or approved project, um, coming for direct funding for the additional, um, funding of fifty thousand dollars for the Kylie Heiner, um, Memorial Playground. Um, again, it was fifty thousand, um, the, it will be totally dispersed to finish the project and make sure the project is on time and hopefully open for the public to start enjoying the summer. Uh, I will let you know that we did have our first public hearing, our public hearing on April sixth, with no, no one to post of it.
This is first reading, uh, any questions on that, first?
Okay, next project, um, we have the opportunity to do, um, so... Next project, we have the opportunity to do some great marketing campaign through our Canyon Main Street. They asked for additional. Sorry, absolutely.
I'll make it official. You're good. Item number 10, first reading of resolution number 19 dash 2023, a resolution of the C Commission of the City of Canyon approving a project funding agreement between Canyon Main Street and Canyon Economic Development Corporation relating to direct financial assistance for CMS marketing campaign.
Again, no, thank y'all. So, we're super excited. They have a great plan. Canyon Main Street actually came for us for some funds to help them direct people from areas and their events and different things to actually come to Canyon to hopefully spend their sales tax dollars. And that way, we can continue to do funds like this. The total request was 28,000. That, again, was a public hearing in April 6th, and there was no one opposed to that project either.
First reading there as well. And then, was there any questions on that one? Item number 11, first reading of resolution number 20 dash 2023, a resolution of the C Commission of the City of Canyon approving a project funding agreement between Texas Outdoor Musical and Canyon Economic Development Corporation relating to direct financial assistance for new audio equipment and infrastructure for the Pioneer Amphitheater in Palo de Rojo Canyon State Park.
Again, when everybody thinks of the Canyon, they think of the Canyon and they think of the Texas musical. So, we were excited to have the ability to help them make and enhance their opportunity for the fans, for the clients, and for the people that are gonna be able there. The total funding request was for 55,000. Again, April 6th, we had our first hearing, our public hearing, and there was no one to oppose that project either.
Any questions on that one? Also, first reading. Then, item number 12, first reading of resolution number 21 dash 2023, a resolution of the C Commission of the City of Canyon approving a project funding agreement between Canyon Chamber of Commerce and Canyon Economic Development Corporation relating to direct financial assistance for annual Independence Day celebration and Christmas and Canyon fireworks displays.
Again, everybody knows that July 4th is a big opportunity and big influx of people from the entire community in the entire, I guess, Texas Panhandle that comes to Canyon. So, the total funding for this, for both of our, those, I guess, firework displays were 23,000. And again, April 6th, we had a public hearing and no one was opposed to that project either. Any questions? Thank you, guys. Appreciate it all.
Appreciate you. All right, that takes us to item number 13, considering take appropriate action on resolution number 17 dash 2023, a resolution of the C Commission of the City of Canyon, Texas, authorizing the submission of a Texas Community Development Block Grant Program, application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the Texas Community Development Block Grant Downtown Revitalization Main Street Citizen Program.
Once again, you all, we've talked about the downtown revitalization program, the alley that we're redoing. This is just another box that we have to check of all the things we have to do to be eligible to submit our grant. PRPC staff will be submitting for us. We just need to pass this resolution, and that'll be the next step in that application process.
Same project, this alley directly over here. I can't see it on the other side. Right next to the star, it's named.
Between Dan Chairman and Thompson, sir.
Yeah, yeah. That alley is what we're gonna do. We're trying to make it look just like the alley by the parking lot.
Shop something.
Shop, yep. It's our fourth time to apply for this grant. I'm praying. I'm still praying. It's been the same project every time. It's half a million dollars with a 25% match.
I'll move, we approve.
Second.
Let's see. So, have a motion second to approve resolution number 17 dash 2023, all in favor, signature by a rising right hand. Opposed, like sign. Thank you all. For diligence and staying at it.
How many times can he be told no?
We'll get there. Item number 14, conduct a public hearing and consider and take appropriate action on replat for Hunsley Hills Unit 6A subdivision in the City of Canyon. Lucas, I can present this one.
So, the Planning and Zoning Commission met last week on this item. This is a replat of an existing plat in Hunsley Hills. You can see, there's a couple maps there that show the previous plat, as shown on Arterino Appraisal District's map, and the proposed plat. What it's doing is turning all of the existing lots and platted Goodnight Trail into one large 8-acre lot. And so, it's essentially vacating the existing plat in favor of this replat to be one lot. Any questions?
Replat Hunsley Hills Unit 6A.
Just, yeah, sorry, we've got open for a public hearing here, so. And before we do, we have Dwight and Mary Ellen. You want to speak to it or anything?
There's 21 lots out there, and most of those lots can't be developed or used as building sites, number one, because Techstock won't allow a driveway permit for Goodnight Trail because it's in a no-passing zone in both directions. So, they won't allow that. So, Goodnight Trail can't come out into 2590. Then, the top four lots have been subdivided without a plat, and so, they're unbuildable. And the drainage ditch along FM 2590 is in the lots and in the property. And so, all the lots along 2590 can't be developed with plating. So, Techstock's in the process of doing a drainage study for the 1,000 acres that's been diverted into that area. And whenever they make a determination of what they're going to do with that drainage, either move it into 2590 or leave it where it is or possibly get more property, then we'll know what we need to do after that. So, that's kinda where we're at.
Questions?
Well, thank you, Dwight. Good to see you.
Mary Ellen Brandt, 58 Jettie Wood. The only concern that I have right now is an address for that property. The reason being is 911. If we have something going on on that property, there is no address. So, I've requested an address from Joe, and he has said he'd get me one. We need that as soon as possible. We've got contractors on that property. And if something happens and I need to call 911, no one will know where to go. So, if you could see that we get one as soon as possible, I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. All right, that takes us to the public hearing on this item, and I will open the public hearing. And we do have one person who's signed in, George Hammond.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Say your name and address, fourth person.
To George Hammond, tree 2404, 15th Avenue. And my comment is this. My daughter, she bought the property there. They got, it looked like it'd be, it'll be a big gigantic fence there, trying to keep the dairy in or whatever, I don't know. But I'm concerned that we're gonna be double fencing, you know, that's not, we have two nice fences there, and they're double fencing coming. I went out there today and made a mistake, opened the gate and walked out on their property. It said they're trespassing violators, we're be prosecuted. And I mean, I stood back and I was, I'm gonna get off this property and I'm gonna be prosecuted for just stepping out the back door thinking it belonged to the golf course, and it was public land. We've had brick out there and all this stuff. Dr. McAfee's kept that nice, his fence, beautiful fence, and they're coming back and putting some kind of fence. I just saw the pipe and the corners that they've already set, put the no trespassing. And that concerns me that, you know, we can't be friendly and hostile and talk to our neighbors and see if we can work out something. Anyway, that's my comment. I know I'm under three. You don't get on her bad ass.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lucas, I think the access coming from, what is the street to the north?
Summit.
Summit. That is not technically an alley.
Correct.
Probably need to finish the public.
Sorry.
Sorry. Yeah, we'll close.
You got me.
Thank you for getting me in trouble.
Thank you, Rachel. So, we'll close.
I'm on my track.
We appreciate your diligence. Did you close?
Yeah, I did.
Okay. I don't believe there's public access going, going from Summit down to this lot. As Dwight kinda mentioned, he is working with Techstock through that. That will take some time to get a true access. However, technically, going down that way, which I'm sure Dwight has permission to do, is not a true public access coming from Summit down. Can you zoom in a little bit, Gretchen, on that, on that map so we can show? So, there's a.
Oh, sorry.
It's being accessed through Techstock's right away.
Through Techstock's right away, right now, just, just so we're clear. Mr. Brandt, would you like to speak to that?
That is a drainage esment right now. It's on Techstock's property. That's the only access there is to that property, is through a drainage esment.
And that's not true public access. So, here it is.
It's, it's the Techstock driveway, and it's a drainage way. So, it's public up to that point. Now, whether it's that, it's in 2590. 2590's a public road. So, but that's the only access to the property right now.
So, that's the only way they, I think that's the only way.
I'm working with Techstock, and we've gotten a letter from Techstock that says they're gonna do the drainage study, and they will allow me one driveway access on the south.
We suspect that that access point, which is a temporary access point, otherwise, the brands could not get to their property at all, other than crossing our property on the golf course. And I mean, that is technically entering on our property as well. And so, I assume, when that day comes, it could be up to a year, Commission, when that day comes, on getting that access point to the south, that access point will not be there. And there's a potential that that drainage could change, be done with. I mean, there's a lot of potentials that we just don't know right now. However, my point was, it's not a, it's not a public access at this point.
It's a public right place at this point.
Thank you.
All right. Entertained that motion now.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and do it again. I'll move that we approve.
Second.
Have a motion second to approve. All in favor, signify, by a rising right hand. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number 15 is to review and discuss the City of Canyon Street Maintenance Master Plan. Dan?
City Manager and I have had some discussions in the last couple of years, and we've seen kinda what's been going on, what our street maintenance has been costing. I know we've tried to roll over into the micro-surfacing after we did our little experiment downtown. And we figured that, let's, let's put together a 10-year plan. The 10-year idea was due to the fact that most streets are due and/or overdue for maintenance, at least at the 10-year mark. So, we, we started years ago on a five-year plan. We were small enough, we could do, and had the, things were cheap enough, we could do everything every five years. Well, that has kinda grown over the years, sort of thing, cost of increase, we've grown. Canyon East came along and everything, so we're to the point now, we're on, as of today, we're on an eight-year plan, just to try to keep everything where we can manage it. And we think that ultimately, we'll go to a 10-year plan. So, that's what we're proposing for y'all to look at today. Talked a little bit about the micro-surfacing. When we came by the downtown area three years ago, we thought it'd be a good idea, just due to the aesthetics and the cleanliness, and I guess that the word is less disruption. The micro-surface versus the old typical chip seal. We thought we'd try a micro-surface downtown. We did about, I think there was like 15 blocks within, right here in the downtown area with the micro-surface, just to try it out and just see how it'd work. We had never tried it before, and we'd heard of other towns that had used it, and even out on the highways, they've used it some. So, basically, just due to the cleanliness of it, we thought we'd try it. And we did, and worked really well, and reviews have been really good. Public seems to enjoy it a lot better than the old messy chip seal that we've been doing all these years. And so, for the last couple of years, we pretty much just stuck with that and moved our street maintenance program basically from chip seal exclusively to micro-surface. Well, after a couple of years of 18% increases each year, we thought, well, it's getting to the point now where it's becoming a problem with our budget, so we better rethink our plan. So, basically, in this memo that I have for y'all, I offered basically a 20-year history of kinda what we paid over the years, what we budgeted. You can see this year, we're under budget, but we, we made, I don't know, probably a 15 or 20% increase in the budget just to get where we are. Because I think last year's budget was a little over 500,000, or around 500,000. So, we've been trying to keep up with it best we can. We're struggling now, and now, like I said, for two years in a row now, we've had an 18% increase in the price. So, we just need to look at, look at the whole picture. And if that means go back to what we were doing in the past, which is another, the chip seal, that's fine. Or whether it's some kind of hybrid project, like we did when we came by downtown and did like half micro and half chip seal. It's just one of those things that we need to look at, really wanted y'all's input because, mainly because of the budget problems we're facing. In your packet, we, we basically, it's just a graph representation of our 10-year plan. Yeah, it's probably standing right in the way where you can't see it. But, and then, over on the right-hand side of that page, you'll see kinda where we're at as far as our cost estimates and kinda where we are with the areas and their size, and then kinda where we're at on the budget. And to start with, we didn't really know what to do as far as how we're gonna inflate those prices, so we, we just kinda grabbed the 5% number out of the air, because that's kinda the old style inflation, and use that number. We could be way off. Like I said, the price on micro at least has gone up, you know, quite a bit. So, if, and you can look down to year 10, in both scenarios, we're right at a little over a million dollars. Typically, you know, in the last couple of years, it's been more like half that, 500, 600,000. So, anyway, like I said, we just wanted to let you guys know what's going on and where we're at. And we're really struggling to keep our maintenance program manageable as far as getting the entire town done in a 10-year period, and, or at least in our eight-year period now. So, we thought we'd bring this to you and kinda let you chew on it, maybe give us a little help on what your ideas were on where we go from here. Joe, you have anything to add?
No, I think you said it very well, Dan. And since there are the new subdivisions coming on in the later years, so we've, we've inputted those in there. Description's really good.
Well, I just, I'm sorry. Let me cut you off. Those three new developments out there, west and north, have basically added 15% to our total area. So, when those get built out, it may be 10 more years down the line before they are, but I just wanted to let you know that that's, that's basically adding another 15% to our total street maintenance area.
I think from, obviously, micro has been very, very complimentary from the public at large. We're still watching it from a maintenance aspect to see if it's as comparable as a chip seal. Seems to be doing well. You can see the cracks a little easy. I mean, if this has cracks in the foundation. You can see the cracks a little easy. I mean, if this has cracks in the foundation, those are going to show through. It's a little less to show through on chip seal because there's so much aggregate, so much rock in there. But that's the one, one setback on micro, but it is a lot cleaner, has a really refined rock in there.
It's a lot like a mini overlay.
So if we want to do that moving forward, it's pretty easy to show you on that, in that box on the very top, on the cost breakdown, that we're not there in terms of funding. You'll see a separate document of some of the preliminary budget things that we're looking at from the general fund perspective. From areas and general fund to three firefighters and the microsurfacing, I have included that document. Both helped me add that in there. And so, and I have actually, just for simplicity, allows a deduction on the sales tax revenue to help make that a little more of a palatable number. But it's 435,000 is what we're looking at right now during the budget on increase in, in, as a law and property taxes. So where, if we want to go to exclusive micro, we need to budget about 186,000 more dollars next year. So micro is a more of a luxury item, pros and cons to it, just like chip seal. Or, you know, we do what Dan said, maybe we chip seal some areas and micro others. And then if that is, if that is the way you want to go, staff can bring you back some streets. We would, we would choose to do that just by looking at the thoroughfare aspect of it. We just, we want feedback. So I expect to hear from everybody on this topic. We really need the feedback to move forward. We don't have a funding shortfall right now if we just do seal coat. You can see our budget's about 610 right now. We're going to be able to meet if we just do seal coat.
Yeah, you said it'd be about a $15,000 increase is all it'd be if we just do chips in.
Right. Love to hear from you all. Y'all have, everybody's seen the micro. I think a lot of you'll like it. I know. A little bit. Any guidance moving into the future would be appreciated on this topic.
And if I might, the reason we created more of these general areas as they appear on this, on this map is that the contractors, it's a, used to back in the day, we just kind of shotgun the things. We'd go out and we'd look at the streets and we'd evaluate the streets and we'd see which ones needed maintenance the worst. Well, it created a problem because the contractors, they didn't like having to drag all their materials at all these other different places around town. And so we consolidated back, I want to say even, I think Randy was still the other work director when we started this idea of putting it in kind of like blocks like this. It's, it's a lot easier on the contractors. We got a better price because they're not having to do a bunch of moving around. They're basically, their work's contained to one smaller area. So that's, that's basically why we, we did this years ago rather than like we did previously where we just kind of picked and choose stuff, you know, and just worked on the worst parts. And I guess where I'm going with that is I think we're at the point again with our streets to where there's other ways that you can do evaluations of your streets and do a street assessment. Joe has a lot more experience with this than I. I think they did it over in his, his previous city. And he can probably speak to the details a little more than I can. But I think that moving forward, we also, that would really help us decide what to do and where to do it with doing a, a regular full, what I would call a full-blown street assessment, which would include some.
Trip index counter or index.
That counts and, and they do ground penetrating radar. Basically is what they do. They, they have, they have bands and things where they drive over your streets and they'll be ground penetrating radar and kind of show you what's underneath. And that's the most important part. I think everybody knows that that's the best, what's, that is the most important part of your street is what's underneath anyway, rather than the surface.
So the one thing is, this is just maintenance. There are streets that do need to be constructed, reconstructed. That's not in this number. We've got a handful of those.
These, that, this type of valuation that we're talking about will give us those streets. And please, Joe, speak, if you'd like to speak more about the process.
It's going to be, it's going to be one of the options in the brick funding study. So the brick funding study is, is on the move internally. Finalize it a little bit. It will be quite a few pages. Obviously that came straight out of our strategic plan to figure out how to accomplish that. There's some cities down south and across the state that have implemented a street maintenance fee on a utility building and it's directly tied to the land use. And so it is a trip counter and I can't remember the, the book that he uses. It's an engineering book. It has so many trips per business type. So obviously my house will have less trips than a bank or less trips than a convenience store. So homes will play a fat, a flat rate, a flat rate, while a convenience store would play an increased rate because of their impact on streets. And so get it back in my previous community, was very successful, helped rebuilding some major thoroughfare plans. I know Amarillo is also looking into that now. Don't know where they're at. So it's one of the options that Dan's talking about. We could do that. Residential would be a flat rate going into it. Commercial would be the ones that would, would, it would be based on what type of business was at that location. That is an option we can look in. I could probably speak another hour or two on that and give you more detail. But that is another option to looking on the outside. Thank you for your comments.
No, I wouldn't.
I know, I could read your.
Same, please don't.
Just going to do Cody Jones' house, which, what's that address again? That is an option. Obviously, property tax and self-tax can continue to contribute to some of those facts. But, or we go out for debt. That's probably more likely what happened in the next five to seven years. We'll go out, ask for some debt on road reconstructions. Some of those roads that I know were reconstructed on the ZFV, second, North Second Avenue's very high on that list. That's the, that's the road between Feldman's, United and Subway. Chicken Express. That one needs to be reconstructed for sure. We've talked about partnering with WT to widen and reconstruct WT M U Drive down to the end of the sports complex. That's another one. So there's several on that radar that definitely need to be addressed. In addition to what's here, to be clear.
The last thing I'd like to say and then I'll answer your questions is that Canyon over the years, even since I've had anything to do with it, 25 years, has done an excellent job thanks to you fellows and your predecessors. Maintaining a really good street maintenance program. And I think you should be proud is generally in the condition of your streets. I mean, I, I used to work all over the Panhandle and well, it's Canyon's always looked the best of any of the other cities that I've ever seen overall. So you're to be commended and your predecessors are also to be commended for letting us do all we've done over the last 25 years. Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, I just have a couple of questions. So you're moving to a 10-year plan from a what?
We're, we're on eight years right now, but we haven't added 15% to our volume either.
For sure. But, but your, your eight-year plan doesn't include, your blocks aren't that big current.
I'm not following it, Cody.
We're not, we're not resurfacing that much, that much area every year. We haven't been, have we?
We cannot because of these unit prices keep going up.
So we're going to, I mean, I, you, you created that map. Is that, what percentage increase do you think that is just the surface area? Which?
Per year. What's added? If, if memory serves, I'm just kind of shooting from the hip here. I don't have the numbers in front of me. Our average year is, this isn't that far off from what our average year is area-wise typically. It may be a little smaller than this. I think if you, if you just look at this and run the averages, it's probably just, I'm just kind of guessing here, somewhere around 175,000 square yards a year. And back when we were just doing chip seal, we did more than that. I mean, there was years we did 200,000 square yards when it was affordable and we had the budget to do it. So we basically just took this entire area and divided by 10, basically.
How many, how, how many square feet are we doing right now? Did we do this year?
And the contract this year was for, I may not have that right here.
105,000, Oscar.
Thanks, Oscar. So we're doing 105,000 this year.
So it's about double what we normally do.
Right, or, yeah, 85. Or, yeah.
And increasing the year.
Correct. The, the areas will not change according to this plan. I mean, we basically got all areas set by this plan based on what you see on the map.
That's a, that is a lot of area. And you're talking from Canyon High School to the Duchess.
Lot of area. We're eight square miles.
So then you're comfortable going from eight years to 10?
Yes. Kind of as a side note, my last, my last, my final comment that I made a minute ago that we've done so well maintaining them over the years, that's basically, in my opinion, has increased the life somewhat. So I don't think going from eight to 10 is going to make that much difference. Now, getting, we'll have to have, we got to have another conversation if we want to go beyond 10 though.
Those areas are bigger than you're doing today.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes, I think that's twice.
That's what Cody was, that's where Cody was coming from, I think, was his point is those are, in order to get it done in 10 years, we got to do more than we're, than we've been doing. And that's going to cost more than it's been costing.
Well, it's, it's, the chart shows you what it's, about what it's going to cost.
I mean, personally, I think it's super wise. I mean, if you're fighting inflation, you're extending time, extend your size too, to offset the inflation, you're going to pay a different price next year than you do if you do an eight-year plan. I mean, you have to, you almost have to increase that size. That's what makes sense to me. I just, that's all.
Yeah, and we're hoping the economy will come around a little bit where we're not having to pay another 18% increase next year. Well, that's, that's just speaking to the microsurface. What, Oscar, what have you seen for seal coating as far as price increase?
It's been increasing about 7 to 10% depending. The, the issue of 2020, 2021 was COVID. COVID really affected the crisis because of uncertainty. When first, when COVID first started the contract, I was like, I don't know if I'm going to be able to do the job. Because I don't know if I can work. That created a problem with the, these typical costs. And about every 10 to 12 years, I see that, that this couple of years are odd. But I would say, yeah, probably 7, 9% increase in a year is not a problem. It also depends on the size of the product. And these kind of projects, economy by scale really, really, really is key. If you have a large amount of square yard on your project, your unit price will decrease. If you don't have that much square yards on your project, then basically you're paying for mobilization and, and you don't get as much of a, of a product.
It's basically how close are you to the material?
Correct.
If you're close to the material, it's pretty cheap. If you're not close to the rock, it's going to be quite a bit more expensive.
But you feel like the microsurface is lasting longer?
I don't know about to say that, but. I don't know about longer. I, I think we're probably getting the same product. To me, just from what we've heard around town and from what I've witnessed on the first year or two that we've done it, it's not cracking any worse or failing any worse than a seal coat would. It's just, like Joe said, it's hard to see because you got a layer of asphalt with rock on it. It's a totally different product. It's going to look more like a thin asphalt overlay. And a lot of people don't understand, well, it's already cracking. It's already cracking. Well, the cracks that are already in the surface are going to reflect through anything you put on top of it, whether it's a chip seal or a microsurface or any other surface treatment for that matter. That's why they call it a surface treatment. That's all it does. It doesn't really add any stability or any structure to the road. It just basically tries to help keep the water out. It's the word seal coat.
I think it'd be my preference to go back to the chip seal on the majority of things. You know, maybe key areas around here downtown, city hall, you know, I don't know if that's one in 10 years that we hit those areas with the, the microseal. But, you know, it's year 10, that's quarter million dollar difference and, and just, you know, just in our budget and all. Sounds like to me it, it is a luxury item. I don't know it really lasts longer in those parts. So I think people like the aesthetics of it, but I don't know that it's worth that much to spend what we're paying in taxes. That's my personal.
Well, if it, if it helps, I had High Plains furnish me with what they've seen this year on the rest of their chip seal projects. Of course, like Oscar said, if you have a large job like we would have, the price is always a little lower just because there's more work and you can do. Anyway, I'm looking on here at a list they sent me. The biggest job I see on here is a job about half our size. And it's three, almost 350 a square yard. So I don't think we're that far off with our estimates. If you look at year one on the, on the plan, we're estimating 380. So I don't, I don't think that's, that's all that. I think these numbers are pretty good is what I'm going to say. And the numbers that they furnished me are anywhere from 335 to 390 per square yard. So, and those for, that's for a lot smaller projects than, than what we'll do. The, the largest project I said on here being a job about half our size.
But even this upcoming year, we can save 186,000 to 186,000 by going back to the chip seal.
That's correct. Well, I'd, to be exact, or not exactly, to be accurate, my ear, I would say more like 150,000 because it's going to, the seal coat will go up to, I think about another 20,000 for what we're paying now.
But that's been the same that we've been doing with the microsurface. Nothing's changed on the differential between one and the other. We've been paying more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The last two years, the micro's gone up 18% each year.
Year one is Madison Park. That's why we wanted to come let y'all know what was going on because we're going to have to rethink our plan to try to withstand these type of price increases.
Year two will be Huntsley, so it'll catch both of us pretty quick if, but you know, personally, I'm, I'm good with it with cost savings. I think for, for that much difference and I hit our budget. Any other thoughts there?
No real action here. We're just trying to get y'all some information. We want to try the hybrid option. We even want to consider that.
Like a recipe for disaster. Picking and choosing which gets the better roads.
Yeah, I'm not going to, not going to.
And it's two contractors.
Yeah, not even the same contractor. So there's going, there is a challenge to that.
The micro guys don't chip seal and the chip seal guys don't micro. So it'd be two contracts like we did before.
My thought is if you do a hybrid, it really is concentrated. It's not residential areas. It would be kind of this downtown area here, you know, this civic complex area and all that you use. I'm good if we go all back to the chip seal.
And I get labeled the candy saver. Apparently I am not.
I get that label sometimes too.
Well, honestly, you know, we didn't, we moved the, when, it's been three. Well, honestly, you know, we didn't, we moved the, it's been three years since we did this, we started this downtown. And, you know, back then, we didn't really realize the economics we were going to be faced three years down the road. We are, we're where we are, where we are because of the economy, so. We are where we are.
In Dan's terms, we have to do something. We're good with either option, any of the both. Most cost-effective option for the commission is going back to seal coat.
That's the direction I would go. It's just not worth it but the dollars.
Good with that. Aesthetics cost money. We learned that from the first agenda. Second that. I think we should do it all concrete.
Do it all concrete.
I like that though.
You're coming out, you're coming out to do the taps then.
It's maintenance for Dan. Must be somebody that doesn't live in the city.
Thank y'all.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. All right, that takes us to item number sixteen. Executive session pursuant to five fifty-one dot oh seventy-one, consultation with attorney. Five fifty-one dot oh seventy-two, deliberation about real property. And five fifty-one dot oh seventy-one, personnel matters, Director of Public Works. And with that, have five fifty-seven, and we will adjourn into Dixon.
Hey, George. Hey, please. See you later.
You guys would bring all that kind of stuff to you since I don't know.
She will sign that.
Good, how are you?
Happy, yes.
Ready?
I don't care. Appreciate all your work. Appreciate all the.
They have a party.
You guys aren't involved in something, right?
Yeah, I think it's great. Do you know where it is? You can mail drop by.
If it's a good enough, we still pause.
We can email on that. I can, I can.
I think Dan brought you to those discussions. I think that's on there. Yeah, you're on that list. Okay.
Perfect. You're on lots of lists.
Give me a finisher.